Council, February twenty six. Can we have roll call?
Councilor Junior.
Yeah.
Councilor Nogués.
Is it?
Councilor Nogués.
Yeah.
Councilor Nogués.
Here.
Mayor Gilliam.
Yeah. And finally, the really pleased family. Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is a moment of thanks, appreciation, or condolences. But on the left side, anything? There didn't have any.
No.
I have a couple. One is. Cause those are the six individuals that were missing there at the bridge in Baltimore. A tragedy, but then also prayers for peace negotiations in the Middle East. It's been too long and community lives. Lost. And the other one is the father family. They've lost their mother. I involve Rudy and other more. Other family members and services will be next week sometime. So condolences to them. Uh, next item, uh, agenda review. Is there a city council member wishes to move the ordered business that's presented?
I'm good.
Good? Good, good. Okay. The next item is ceremonial calendar. And proclamation expression fifty eight to Hannah Francis for our services as recreation service manager in City of Guadalupe. Uh, it's my pleasure to read this. It's sad, but it's my pleasure anyway. Proclamation expressing appreciation to Hannah Francis for her service as recreational service manager of the city of Guadalupe. Whereas Hannah Francis was hired as recreation service manager on January tenth, uh, twenty twenty two and provided professional recreation management to the city, helping generate commitment to continuous improvement. To destroy department that will continue well into the future. And whereas Hannah has served the city and residents of Guadalupe well. And has exhibited her strong sense of civil service dedication to provide an excellent recreational. And park service and professional expertise. And whereas Hannah has been able to begin upgrades and renovations to all her facilities and parks. Including the city hall editorial, we were at Park Phase Two. Uh, additions and renovations and has assisted in the planning and design of the new Central Park. Whereas Hannah developed partnership with outside organizations to bring more programs to Guadalupe. For all ages of the community such as the Boys and Girls Club, Youth Evolution Basketball and Soccer, Little House by the Park, and. Where whereas Hannah has created annual events and activities like Father Daughter Dance, Cinco de Mayo Celebration. And seasonal movie night night. And collaborated with other organizations to bring about the grand opening event of Lira Park. Los Fuentes Unidos Resource Fair, Vidal Esports Celebration. And ran both adult drop in sports nights and sports leagues as well as offered a variety of. Uh, creative recreational activities for the entire community. Whereas the city of Guadalupe has benefited from Hannah Francis' commitment of time. Energy, knowledge, and intelligence in numerous projects. Initiatives and matters in order to grow the recreational opportunities in Guadalupe. Now therefore be resolved by the virtue vested in me as a mayor. And on behalf of the city council, City of Guadalupe. I take this opportunity to express sincere appreciation and recognition to Hannah's practice for her dedication. Commitment, value, contribution to the city, citizens of Guadalupe. Thank you, Hannah. We're gonna miss you.
Beach.
Oh, um, Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Opera here. And and we want to thank you as well as that from the whole city. Here's some. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna read something purely. The friends of Guadalupe Public Library, the Rancho de Guadalupe Historical Society, and I personally wish to thank Hannah for her steadfast assistance. To each of us scheduling event and getting noticed to the theater, MRT. Well done. Bien hecho. Hannah, enjoy your new phase of life. And also another gift from them I want to hand it to you. Is this?
There you go.
The people of Guadalupe with you.
And the proclamation didn't mention that she could dump the basketball. Great softball player and volleyball player.
Yeah.
And she both lost.
Yeah.
Thank you, Hannah. I'll miss you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, presentation, Budalupan Ninth Street Bridge mural, twenty twenty four community project. Who's up? Stephanie?
Yes, I'm a first. Um, my name is Stephanie Kraut, and I'm a local person. People know almost everybody here, and I've been living in Guadalupe for twenty six years. And, um. About years ago, I started murals in Guadalupe. And, um. This year, Núñez Navarro and I are contracted artists. Excuse me. We're contracted artists with Ponce, a Little House by the Park. Um, and the Guadalupe Community Changers. And we have, we're being paid through a. Um, where. Uh, we're supposed to bring art to the community. Um, and also to get art in the community and get the community making art. So Núñez came up with this idea of. Why don't we figure out how we could get the train bridge painted? And when he said that, I thought, wow, that would be amazing. Uh, especially because on all my walks around town and on my trips out to murals, I would. And I'd see graffiti. And I see graffiti covered up and just wonder, wow, what could this be? Um, with the murals that I've already done in in Guadalupe, I've noticed that when you have a mural. Um. For whatever reason, uh, people that might have wanted to be based areas that don't have the art. They seem to leave it. Um, on the mural that I worked on with with Gilbert Road List. Um, on ninth day. We noticed that the graffiti people just waited and watched. They waited to see what was gonna happen. Um, and when they saw that the wall got painted, left it alone. So the power of art is huge. And, um, that's what this presentation is is about. We're hoping to inspire the city to be on board with. Getting the train bridge painted. So, um, Núñez, can you come up here now? He's come up with a really nice presentation.
You're a quick reader.
Right. To it. Just a good one. Long Sandy Community Bridge. Um, I feel like, uh. Everybody who, I feel everybody's familiar with the bridge. If you're not, step outside. It's right there. Um. You know, as long as I've known it, um. This. I've always loved this bridge. Um, it's a big bridge down. It's pretty large. Um. It's just like, for, I've used it, you know, different ways, working out. Just transportation. I think it's just a. Really meaningful community bridge that, uh, we can afford to use. So what I envision and what's like really cool about it is. It's standing at the east in what I. Uh, and in the four directions, um. That's representing, you know, dawn and dusk. I think that would be a great representation on these huge pillars. Uh, we have transients coming daily. The Amtrak, and these people have no idea that are cities here, really. It's tiny city, but. This, these images that we'll put up there will be seen, and that would be, you know. They'll recognize that and go, oh, what was that? It was, I think it's be a huge opportunity for. For community to be really on the map on California on this. Um, the train. That's why I'm envisioning for the immediate all around. Or, um, rising on the east side of this. It's really, um. Special to our town is. Has lots of migrants and. It's just a lot of people coming and going from the get go. Um, early on, about a hundred years ago. It was boldly, you know, Swiss Italian and just four percent Mexican. Uh, it was very large Japanese. Um, we had a large Filipino community. Um, that kind of shifted, uh, and that's what kind of got my attention with the the suitcases. It shifted, um, in the world too, um, when our Japanese community was really ripped from our community. And, um, and what the suitcases, uh, represent. But not only that, you know, we have migrants coming in and out of our community all the time. And sometimes the whole world is wrapped up in this suitcase. Um, so I think suitcases are very fitting, um, to be in. This would be placed on. Oh. On this side right here, this area right here. And there right here, I imagine suitcases and, you know, even personalize it with, you know, I'm sure everybody has a name and know, and, you know, put it on there. We didn't just get here, you know, one of my ancestors. Got us here in the Cali, but but to get here in his little quad, but still, you know, we're here. Uh, and then following up the sides of the main pillars on each side, I imagine, um, some roses. Roses, um, farming vines, red top thing, roses, really fun, makes sense. Isn't it? Um, this is actually, um. Could be opportunity possibly for more funding, um, for businesses to put their name on here, but. Regardless, this would be, I would imagine this would be a great area to, um, paint businesses and their logos or have you. That help build this community, you know, make it what it is today. These things, you know. Longstanding, uh, or have, you know. Have roots in our community that. A lot of us share, you know, memories. These are things that, you know, we go to or. That did or, um, that one time that it stayed up, this restaurant stayed up open way too late, but, you know, it was. One thing that they're there, they're right there partying with you. Um, so it would be nice to pay homage to them. And the community members that shape our community cultures that give us our favor. Um, this area on top here of the bridge would be, um. A spot for. Painting, uh, community members, um, some of the. Members you might recognize, um, others from the past, Inna Harry, um, Steve, um, Joe. These are the people that have really shaped us and, um. Led our community towards they run into us in the right direction and really gave a helping hand when this community needed it. And I think that would be a great opportunity to pay homage to them. Um. And then this lower area down here will be for us. Um, mix of our own town today, you know, people that come out and help on, you know, it's a chance to put your family name down. This, everybody and anybody who currently makes. This is, I want to paint it as. A real community project. This is something that's something, you know, wanna spend time on, wanna be out there and food out there, music out there, and this. Almost like a block party, you know, this is, but it's somewhere you wanna be at. It's time, I'm going, it's time I'm gonna remember. For ever. That was fun. Really fun. Never were doing. And so, um, looking. For. Our word. We have a budget to be developed, get some research on how much. You know, we're gonna get that bridge cleaned, straight rock, primer, all these necessary things. We're gonna require a fork lift. Or a stinder jack, what have you, um. All these things will be researched timeline. What does it look like? What do you do for time? What day we're gonna, you know, start it, lead it, and support, um. Kind of all hands on deck of just like, kind of just. Grab some community, community, um, is is. So in conclusion, we really think that this. Project, um, you know, it brings things like community beautification, community involvement. These are things like. You notice, um, you know, people don't. People care about what they work on, you know, somebody who. They're gonna want the community to take care of this because they're gonna work hard on it, turn it, destroy it. It's like, oh. Well, we worked hard on this, so that's the fact. This is ours. Um, and rich people, Guadalupe community, Guadalupe landmark, you know, these are things, this is a huge bridge that will be, you know, a landmark. From the transients on train to us, just, you know, walking around, we'll know, you know, it's our story, all by us. When we get.
Now that, um. Thinking outside the box, this really does it, you know, and and I know that with Central Park or whatever's gonna be named in the future. That ties right into, you know, the bridge. Um, you have the the jail, the historical society's, uh, jail there that. It all encompass a lot of history, and you've mentioned a lot of history in terms of. Of the Japanese, of the Chinese, of the Filipinos, the main kinds of field workers. So I think it's, uh. Be attributed to the the community, so. Um. The, the bridge, I don't, this is probably a question for Phil. Uh, I'm not sure if we put it there or if, uh, the railroad, South Pacific put it there.
Yes, we can hear Todd and I were just chatting about that, um, for the presentation, whether some kind of permits would be required or not. We don't know.
Okay.
So we'll have to look into that, but, um, we will.
I think, uh, in addition to that, I know that speaking with, uh. Gilbert, who has one of the shots, you can almost see his private shop over there. And one of the things that we discussed is using Central Park or whatever it's gonna be called. Um, as a venue for people blocking up that street to where you can have events at that. Putting the, you know, the bridge. I think it's a great, it's a great project. It's, uh. And you probably, you're looking at the budget, not be another, this one that's. Um, that's gonna come up, uh. Quickly, what's what's your timeframe? If you had all money in the world, what's your, what's the timeframe?
If I had all, I would say, um. Probably be a week after the kids got out of school, really attack the, um, summer and try to just like tear through the summer. Kind of paint as such as like, this is what we're doing. This, I put out here, you know. Music and room paint, you know, paint, tell our story.
How about community of, you mentioned school. Is there? Are kids gonna be involved in it, or is it, I'm sure they're not gonna be up in the scaffolding, um.
Are we in touch with? Insurance signed it off. I imagine, uh, yeah, definitely, um, adults up on there, but, um. Just kind of like painting outline and letting people go to town, right? Pretty much. Just having everybody, anybody. As part also on the budget, I wanna, no, I was talking to Karen, um, and she had mentioned that, uh, Amtrak, uh, has like. Budget for arts too, um, that be something, uh, tapped into it. And so that's also avenue to be researched on for budget.
Well, let's, what's the voice of the council here?
Uh, I really wanna thank you for helping to talk like, um. Our story is told by her. I think that's really important. This is amazing. While we see our story told by us. I think that is really important. I actually posted something in twenty twenty. Um, there is a video that I found. It was FBI raised West Coast Town Guadalupe. April twenty ninth, nineteen forty two. Stephanie, Stephanie, community members in Guadalupe are rounded up, allowed to only take two suitcases. Taking from their homes, many to never return. Um, hearing these stories are really heartbreaking, um, and it's important that we continue to make sure that these stories are told.
I think it's a great project. What do you need from us? Besides. Money, money. Ask it.
Um. Um, I guess at this point, uh, so I guess unanimous support and, uh, research.
Yeah, we have to, we'll have to bring this back for action and budget items and permits and further information. So there's, there's no promise at this point. Just gonna make that clear.
Well, there's a promise that we supported.
Yeah, I understand clearly, but there's, there's no, um, no commitment. It can't. And that's, or what Jen does is presentation information.
Thank you very good. Thank you. Right.
That's funny.
Next time, uh, presentation, Guadalupe broadband survey results and updates. That's welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Uh, as you know, the broadband survey. Was a fairly sizable project for the city, so. I'm gonna be a. Bad teacher and actually read a lot of these slides, try not to fall asleep. But try and keep it relatively sustained, so. Uh, for those of you who don't know about the broadband survey, why did we do it? Uh, the Guadalupe Broadband Navigator Project was created to get the most accurate data available on the baseline existence and quality of broadband services within the city of Guadalupe, California. Conceived as a census style survey administered door to door. This data would be used by organizations and/or departments within the city, county, state, and federal agencies to help make decisions. For the most effective deployment of ubiquitous broadband solutions for the city and the county. As a side note, um, this was the first census style survey in the county, in the tri-county area, and so. Uh, it's being used as a pilot, as a model for other communities. So that puts a little exclamation point on Guadalupe. So we can all pat ourselves on the back for that. Um, in addition, in addition to bridging the digital divide and improving equity within the residential population. There is significant evidence of a strong relationship between broadband availability and business efficiency and innovation. Without access to reliable broadband within the business districts, including the downtown business corridor. As well as the manufacturing and industrial areas, the ability for the city to attract new businesses will be at a significant disadvantage. I guess I can be.
There you go.
There we go. Multitasking, right? So. How did we do this, this survey? So the first thing we did was location analysis. Because this was meant to be a census style survey, there were going to be multiple canvassers going door to door. The city would have to be broken up in such a way the canvassers would be able to maximize their efficiency and not tread the same ground that other canvassers may already have completed. Additionally, because there was a focus on utilizing canvassers from within our own community, rather than employing personnel from outside the area. We created districts, which allowed canvassers to select areas that they felt that they were familiar with the population and the languages spoken therein. So how did we do it? There were fifteen districts that covered the entirety of the city. District one was at the westernmost side of the map. Sure. Over there was District One. District eight and nine were on the southern border of the city map and were comprised of the new Path de la Development. Those were down here. Districts ten and eleven provided the eastern side of town, known as the Treasure Park area. Right here. And, um, districts twelve and thirteen bordered the northernmost edge of town. Up there. Districts seven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen included residences as well as the downtown business corridor. So all down through that area. And that included retail, restaurants, commercial, industrial, and manufacturing. So then we had to develop the survey itself. Significant thought was put into the development of the broadband survey. Above all, the focus needed to be on the surveys being simple and direct. During the development process, we asked ourselves the question, what is the point of this survey? This was foundational. Because the survey needed to reach as many people in the community as possible. We knew that there were language barriers. We suspected that there might be cultural barriers as well. This in reference to both racial and age-related culture. To be as inclusive as possible, we felt the surveys needed to be short, to the point, and available in at least English and Spanish. The questions were developed to be easily understood and to focus on the following. One. What's the baseline of internet connectivity from the entire community, not just those that have access to broadband? And to be clear, many surveys that have been done in the community in the past. And to be clear, many surveys that have been done in the community in the past. The, the canvassers or the, the people that generate the survey say, hey, connect to your internet. And take the survey. What's problematic, because that introduces bias, you can't take the survey if you don't have internet, which really. Is the point of the survey, so. We wanted to also find the level of available service for those that had it. We wanted to get a baseline understanding, a baseline of the understanding when it came to two key industry marketing terms, broadband and fiber. Most of you that have internet here or have gotten marketing materials and if they all say broadband, they all say fiber. What was really interesting was how many people had no idea what those terms meant. We've got a lot of people that are paying for stuff, they don't know what they're paying for. Why or why not, survey respondents use their internet connection? And if there was community interest in the provisioning of broadband as a public utility. So, recruitment of canvassers, one of the unique features of the Guadalupe Broadband Survey. Was its focus on utilizing local canvassers to conduct the survey. This was based on the hypothesis that there would be a stronger survey response from an in-person request versus an in-person postal or online survey. As a result of these efforts, canvassers were either living in Guadalupe or Santa Maria and were former residents of Guadalupe. Or parts of organizations that were active within the city. Data collection, the data collection process went relatively smoothly. Several web-based resources have started the success of survey responses, some of those metrics include. Thirty-three percent is the average response rate for all survey channels, including in-person and digital. Um, a good survey response rate ranges between five percent to thirty percent. An excellent response rate is fifty percent or higher. Response rates vary widely for different types of surveys, customer satisfaction surveys and market research. Market research surveys often have response rates in the ten to thirty percent range. Our survey ended up with nearly fifty percent. Response rate, so we were pretty excited about that. So. Uh, as you could see, it was a aggregate survey response rate for Guadalupe was forty-eight point three five, whoops. There we go. Kind of hard to see at the bottom, but it's an orange. So, uh, any questions so far before I? Continue on, there's going to be a test after this, there will not. At least pretend you're. So, you know, what was the point, what were the results? Well, first question, are you connected? The most basic question of connectivity provided a clear indication that broadband was available and used within the city. We had over a thousand respondents. Almost the thousand, when you said yes, about a hundred said no. How are you connected? And for those of you that are mathematicians, you will notice that the percentages add up to more than a hundred percent. And this is because people could select more than one answer, just making sure. Um, the majority of respondents connected via wifi. Just over half of respondents connected via a quote hardwire or wire-based connection. That's like the ethernet cables or, or fiber optic. Much smaller percentages use cellular hotspot, satellite connections, or only use their cell phones to connect. Typically, because the city does not enjoy a wireless network, either through private or public funding. The reality is most people that use wifi, it should really be about a hundred percent, the same, the same number that use hardwire uses wifi. Because you're using wifi through a hardwired connection. But if you don't understand fully what you're using, then you're not going to know that. So, um, the vast majority of people, again, it's the comfort and familiarity with the phrase, oh, wifi. I know that, I use that, and so that's what they said. All right, speed and reliability satisfaction, this, this one's interesting. The majority of residents connected via wifi, just over half of respondents connected with hardware or said all that. So, does your connection speed meet your needs? Well, seventy-seven percent of the respondents said yes. Of, of those who were connected, um, only twenty-two percent said no. One percent said sometimes. But what's important here is context, and I'll get to that a little bit later in my rambling narrative here. Is your, is your connection performance reliable enough for your needs? Again, roughly the same amount, about seventy-four percent said, yes, it's reliable enough. About twenty-four percent said no, and back to that one percent said sometimes. So on the surface, it sounds like by and large, the community for the amount of complaining, I think we all hear on the street. Most people seem to be satisfied with speed and reliability, at least that's what the data says. But, as I said, context matters. And we will get to that. But first, we're going to talk about who do you use? Spectrum accounted for nearly ninety-one percent of survey, of service, of survey respondents. The largest competitor was Frontier, and they accounted for less than six percent of the respondents' market share, so really. Charter Spectrum is the behemoth in the community. And then we asked people, well, why, why do you connect to the internet? So. This was interesting, the top reason for usage was entertainment. Maybe it wasn't surprising, but it was interesting that people actually said, yeah, this is what I'm connecting for. Seventy-five percent of the respondents cited that that was a reason for using connectivity. Shopping and working from home were nearly equal at fifty-five to fifty-six percent. Gaming and healthcare were the next tier at forty-seven to forty-five percent respectively. Other was cited by about ten percent of respondents and reasons included business transactions like point-of-sale systems. Um, social media and online banking. So. We asked the question, do you understand, so what are, what are we even talking about? What is interesting is that over half the survey respondents that are currently connected to the internet. Don't understand the basic terms of broadband or fiber, even though they are dominant keywords that is used in industry marketing materials. It is not surprising that the corresponding numbers increase for those that are not connected. We feel that providing educational opportunities for the local community can help with baseline understanding of technology. So that they can make better decisions as consumers. And in support of those numbers, or in, in support of those statements. For connected users, people that actually are paying money to connect to the internet. Forty-six percent of them said they understand the term broadband. Fifty-three percent said, I don't know what that means. Do you understand the term fiber as it relates to the internet? Only thirty-eight percent of people who are actually paying for internet services understood. Sixty-two percent said they had no idea, they did not understand. Not surprisingly, non-connected users. You had twenty-one percent that said they understood broadband, seventy-nine percent said they didn't. Twenty percent said they understood fiber, eighty percent said they didn't. So, final question really, um. Almost the final question was. What do you think of broadband as a utility, like water or trash, basically a service that you're paying the city for? For people that had a connection, it was overwhelmingly showing interest in it, eighty-five percent. Of the respondents said yes, they would consider using internet service if it was a public utility. Thirteen percent said no, two percent were on the fence. Of non-connected users. They would consider getting a connection if it were a public utility, sixty percent of them said they would consider it. Thirty-nine percent said no, only one percent said maybe. Which begs the question, for those that were not connected, why are you not connected? Nearly half of those without services that they did not need it. This could be due to access at work or another location like a library. There was also a large percentage of those without service that mentioned that cost was a factor. This was interesting considering the high percentage of what's called the Affordable Connectivity Program. Or the ACP, which was done here in Guadalupe and around the county, and the ACP provided discounted internet services. That program was recently sunset in February, February, March. So it would be interesting to see. What type of change in, in response we would have gotten from the community if the ACP was not available. In fact, Guadalupe. Had the highest percentage of qualified enrolled households in the entire county, we had ninety-five percent of people who qualified for the program. Actually take advantage of it, which was pretty amazing. But that's also kind of scary because they just terminated the program. So. Moving on. That's, I know it's kind of hard to see that, but. I thought some interesting thoughts to share from our canvassers, this is community people who were doing the surveys. They were the ones that were going door-to-door and talking to people, and they had some interesting insights. Um, I did, uh, I did post survey interviews with the canvassers, and these are some of the things that they said. Some community members thought we were selling things or questioned the survey legitimacy. It would have been better if they had been notified directly by the city, some apps were city business cards or their leave behinds. The change of the sponsorship from, uh, which was a fiscal sponsorship of the, of this program that was funded through. The Santa Barbara Foundation, we had to change midstream from Los Manos de Guadalupe to then the Service Agency. And that change made some people cautious. Some people would have liked it online often, um, and there were some people that were saying that there may have been a competitive survey by Frontier around the same time. Most people seem to feel that there were no good pathways of communication in the city. The general feeling that the city does not care about its citizens, they feel ignored. And that's really a perception based on communication. Because obviously they're not being ignored. Many were surprised to be actually wanted their opinion. Interestingly, age seemed to be separated by district, with some canvassed district. Primarily forty years or older, in others with lots of kids. Language was more consistent across all canvassed districts, although Mesteca was very concentrated in one of the districts in particular. Lots of people think a change would be a good thing for the residents, because Charter Spectrum is a monopoly. Competition would provide better cost of services, internet is a necessary thing for medical and online build and education. When it is very, it is a very important thing to address, and again. I'm, I'm, these are quotes, I'm not espousing my opinions here. Um, hearing things like the need for more lighting for kids and other safety improvements more than once. It seems that the city needs a better way to communicate more broadly with its citizens. More information and more languages, more transparency with budgets and how money is used, because there is distrust. In where publicized money goes, this could be done with more information in the water bill. It's a great opportunity for Guadalupe, many support the possibility of having it be invoiced with and like utilities. So this was, it was interesting to get this kind of feedback from people talking to the community. Uh, things like the lighting, I heard from more than one person. Uh, they would, they would just take the survey and say, hey, what here? What can we do about the lights over here? The canvassers were like, I don't know. I'd do a survey, so. It was interesting that once people felt there was a connection, they really reached out. And there was, there was more than one instance where we had a canvasser go to a door, and a person would say. Uh, you know, I don't really want to do this, wait a second, I know you from church, I know you from this group. I know you from the neighborhood, yo, okay, I'll do it, I'll take the survey. So, we found that that was, that was really a, a good call, and we were happy that we went that direction. So, let me jump back to that case study, remember context. So at the end of November twenty twenty-three. We were notified that the state had received an official objection from Charter Spectrum. Related to the rural middle-mile network project by Golden State Connect Authority, GSCA. So the GSCA is a joint powers authority comprised of forty rural California counties. Designed for the purpose of increasing access to reliable, affordable, high-speed internet for the residents and businesses of those counties. Basically. The GSCA is an organization, a joint powers authority, that was going to be responsible for. Putting in a middle-mile broadband network, a middle-mile fiber network for rural and underprivileged communities, of which Guadalupe was identified. Charter Spectrum gave an official objection to that, basically, because, well. Information demonstrates the charter can provide broadband service in the project area with service far exceeding. The minimum speed threshold set forth in the FFA program guidelines. Meaning, we already do it, we do it really well, we don't want competition here. So. Out of the nine hundred twenty-two question respondents for that, we received the following information. Almost seventy-five percent said their connection speeds were met. Uh, their connection speeds were met. Twenty-five percent said, no, they were not met. And a little over two percent said connection speed was met sometimes. Reliability, seventy percent needs were met, thirty-one percent, almost thirty-two percent said they were not met. Almost two percent said the reliability needs were met sometimes. But again, I keep saying the word, context. While those numbers out of context paint a picture that supports Spectrum's objection. That they already adequately serviced the area, the deeper dive into the survey responses paints a slightly different picture. Eight out of fifteen districts had thirty percent or more respondents complain that connection speed did not meet their needs. Ten out of fifteen districts had thirty percent or more respondents complain that reliability did not meet their needs. And you can see by this map, it's probably easier for you in printed copies. But this map has little thumbtacks that show. That this dissatisfaction or reliability dissatisfaction. The spread of discontent can be presented in a visual format using a district map overlay. There were a few areas all adjacent to each other that reported satisfactory services. Dissatisfaction over speed and reliability were much more widespread across the city. It could certainly be argued that while there are existing services throughout the city, it did not appear to meet the needs of many of the population. So, that's where context comes in. And I don't know about most of you, but uh. If I had a business where at least a third of my customers. Thought I was too slow or I was too unreliable, I wouldn't be in business very long. So. In conclusion, I know some of you are saying, yes, finally. So, while broadband appears to be available. More so than the public comments might lead one to believe, the speed and reliability of the provided services do appear to be an issue. While there are some areas in the city that appear to be just fine, almost three-quarters of the city harbors fairly significant issues with the incumbent service provider. Ten of fifteen reporting districts had at least twenty percent of respondents dissatisfied with speed, in fact, seven of those districts. Have dissatisfaction levels as high as forty percent. Even more telling was that twelve of the fifteen districts surveyed had at least twenty percent of the respondents unhappy about reliability. Four of those districts had up to fifty percent of all respondents reporting dissatisfaction with reliability. When significant numbers of the population are dissatisfied with the service level of incumbents, it becomes obvious that alternative solutions need to be explored. It is also readily apparent that even if people use a broadband service, they may not understand. The basic terms that they are using and paying for, this educational issue becomes more glaring when respondents do not have a connection. This leads us to believe that educational opportunities pertaining to basic. Uh, pertaining to basic connectivity would benefit the community, um, and. As a side note, just basic technology in general seems to be something that the community has interest in. Finally, future services, according to all respondents, there was significant desire to consider the provisioning of internet services as a public utility. This, uh, this may certainly provide insight for the county and state as to what solutions might be the best fit for. Rural community, and as means of an update. So. Knowing that. The, the city's current resources could not fund, uh. A four or five-person staff and the build-out of a, of an ISP and an internet service provider. The city would have to look at working with other. The city would have to look at working with other communities or other organizations. Within the county to provide said services. We have been in touch with S B C A and. There are two models. There, oh, there's more than two models, but two. Models in particular that we've talked about and both of them, one is based out of Ammon, Idaho, one is based out of. Utah. They're models. We're not talking about using their services. But what these models do is they essentially create a network, a fiber network throughout the community. And then these fiber lines and high capacity Internet communication line are leased out to companies. This provides an opportunity for competition. In places like, like Utah or Idaho, where they have these types of businesses in place. Most of you here that are paying full pop for. Basic Internet service through Charter Spectrum are probably paying between a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Ballpark. That's if you're not bundling with phone or T V plans. And for that, you get about a hundred megs down. And maybe. Fifty megabytes upload speed. So your download speed is faster than your upload speed, but you're about a hundred to fifteen. That's your ratio. And so you're paying, like I said, between a hundred to a hundred and fifty bucks a month. In places like Ammon, Idaho, or places in Utah that utilize Utopia Networks. The competition has allowed for pricing to have ten times the download speed, a thousand megs down. And a thousand megs up for as low as fifty bucks a month. That's huge. That's a game changer, not just for people in the community. That's a game changer for businesses. That kind of thing. That can revitalize manufacturing. It can revitalize industrial. It can, it can revitalize retail. That's the kind of thinking that. Hopefully S B C A will be able to, to leverage into decision making at the, at the county level. So. That said, just, I want to take a quick second to say a statement, thank yous. So I'd like to extend my thanks to the Santa Barbara Foundation to make the survey a reality. Also, thanks to Los Amigos de Guadalupe. The Broadband Consortium Pacific Coast, the Guadalupe Business Association, the Guadalupe Coalition of Nonprofits. Obviously, the city of Guadalupe and other organizations who helped share the information about the survey and to make it possible. A special thank you to the Family Service Agency who stepped into fiscal agency partway through and allowed us to cross the finish line. And the following individuals also deserve to be singled out for their assistance throughout the process. Pedro Amaral, Rubi Estes, Liz Sataya, Delve Arthur, Lisa Bravo, Marcelia Sanzion, Bill Bartel, and A I P R. So. Any questions? What's our next step? Next step, we look forward to hearing the results of S B C A's discussion with the state. And we'll know more at that point. Fred Luna over at S B C A. With them and they were looking. He couldn't give an absolute. Hopefully they were going to get, they're going to get feedback on whether or not the data that we were able to provide. Would help with the objection. That Charter Spectrum presented. There is no official notification that the state provides, apparently. It's just whether or not it moves forward or not. And they were told. Possibly April, but it may get bumped up to June. So we're in a holding pattern until we get more information. Questions from the staff or council?
What's the difference between broadband and fiber?
So broadband is. More of a general term. Broadband encompasses both cable, coax, copper wire, D S L. And fiber. So the, the bigger differentiation is between, say, cable and fiber. Charter Spectrum provides cable services. That's copper wires, metal. Fiber optics, and which is why it's so much faster, they're actually strands of glass. And information is sent via light pulses. So you're actually getting information roughly the speed of light versus. Electrical electromagnetic pulses.
Thank you.
All right. Good information. I know this we can, so we can move forward with this. So. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We'll go to Ivan Seven. Community participation. I have a question to speak. Gloria Vegas.
Hi, my name is Gloria Vegas, outreach coordinator at the Guadalupe Dune. I'm here today to make some announcements on some events, community events that we will have approaching. One being this weekend, which is Coastal Stories. And it is a multicultural event that will be held at the Red Barn. Right behind the cultural center next to the Guadalupe Dune. This will be held at eleven thirty to three thirty. Going to be a really awesome event. We will have a presentation specifically. Directed towards like multicultural celebrations and traditions, including a segment on like Native Americans. They'll be doing their like drumming tradition and a little description and introduction. And the importance and how they use that to celebrate. We will also be doing a portion on the Hispanic community, have some dancers there. They will also have a little introduction. So we, we're really trying to kind of tell a story through that presentation, which will ultimately. Be exactly what we are creating in our mini documentary to capture the voices of the community. And really, really call for the, the stories. In the community of all the different cultures that have made it what it is today and. Actually have some amazing people on our team and they've created a, a V booth. So what it is is basically like a photo booth. But it'll have a recording system available and. People can come in or they can actually like schedule a time where they would like to report. And these stories, they can be any story, but what we've described it to be is. Kind of like the story that your grandmother tells you that you cannot find on Google, right? Those are the stories that bring that richness, that depth. And we'll have, we have Don Charlie who's going to be doing tacos and beans, rice, all the good stuff and. The Lion Club will be doing burgers and hot dogs and we'll have activities available for the kids. And this is the first of two big community events that we'll be hosting for this specific project. And also. Further than this community event, it will be a, a citywide. Opportunity to really emphasize the importance of the dunes and how important it is to the community. And really tell that story. So we invite you. I will have flyers out in the. We welcome you, your family, your friends, anyone you know who would like to get involved, who you think shouldn't be interviewed. We, we definitely have some key players already scheduled for interviews, but we welcome everyone in the community to come on by. Enjoy some food, enjoy some entertainment and tell your story. So hope to see you there. Saturday, the Red Barn behind the cultural center, right next to the Dune Center is where it will be held. And there may be some rain projected, so just an F Y I, it is indoor, so you'll have coverage and will be set. I would also like to just announce for next month, we will be doing a coastal cleanup. So excited that the Guadalupe Beach is now open. So we are planning to do a coastal cleanup. In partnership with a Earth Day. So we'll kind of combine it, have some vendors out there and some other organizations within the same niche. Partnering to have activities and information booths available while doing. An actual coastal cleanup. It actually looks clean. It's so beautiful. Everyone, I'm sure is really excited about that. So. Yeah, that's what I have today. Mainly just announcements. A lot of great things happening. Everyone's super excited. We got the beach open. And it seems to be the reoccurring theme today, just, you know, hearing the voices of the community and telling the stories and. That's exactly, you know, what this project is all about, coastal recovery. So we hope to see you there. Please get the word out. We'd love to. Yeah, hang out with you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. We're good. Thank you. Oh, God, I have eight. I see more, more questions to speak. I'd make consent calendar.
I had one more.
Okay.
It'll be brief. So I do know many of you, but for those that I haven't had the opportunity to meet. My name is Emily Drilling and I am one of your Parks and Recreation Commissioners. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of the renaming of what is currently known as Central Park.
Excuse me, that's on. All right, now we'll go to the consent calendar. Is there any staff member or council member who wishes to pull their item? On the agenda for further discussion? If that's a motion to approve the consent calendar. I'll go through the consent calendar. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor the motions are asked. Bye. Want to manage a report? City administrator report?
Thank you, Mayor Council, staff, public at large. Now that Hannah is departing, we have a new. Recreation Services Manager here, sitting here today. Her name is Anise Barat, and I probably botched that. And I always do. It's the Norwegian in me. So I just want to introduce you to her and do one or two words, one or two words. We're excited.
I am very excited to join the Guadalupe and serve the community as the Recreation Service Manager. And I think it's nice to have me tonight.
Good.
And it's for us.
For us. Everyone else, all right, no problem. Yeah, right. Also, Mayor and Council, just a reminder that on Saturday, the mayor's aware of this and he's going to be dogging that day on Dune Eight. It's called the Peace Run. Beach George Run. And it's a celebration of peace. It's well in advance of that, but I wanted to keep it fresh in your mind. Also, since Larry's here, we couldn't convince and work through UC Santa Barbara's Bren program. Has, they've decided that they cannot do the climate action plan for us. So we're searching other, other ways of. Trying to get it less expensive and he's got some ideas too.
Yeah, I, I just recently contacted the professor that's working on our housing element. They have a similar program in Cal Poly at U C S B. And I just today posed a question to them that they might be interested in taking this on. So I got the blessing from Santa Barbara County to do that because they're the ones that have the money. So we'll find out hopefully in the next week or so. And if they are, then we'll pass the work program along to them and see if they want to bid on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Also, on April fourth at ten o'clock at City Hall, we're going to be, or we're not going to. The pinwheels are going to be planted and there's, I think, one for every, I'm not sure, there's going to be all three, yeah. I. Well, anyways, it's. Pretty impressive and it really decorates the city hall, but it's more importantly, it's for our children and for trafficking and that kind of thing to recognize those that are. Also. David Thomas is our new grant writer for counting because Christine Rose has left. And so far, he's been doing really well. We self and has put together a grant for the senior center. And I know Christina mentioned we had this deadline and so somehow we were able to get a project in queue. For a pre-application that's due April first, but right now we're compiling information for him. To then incorporate that into the pre-application. We don't know what that project's going to be, but we have data on it and. It's upwards of two million dollars. So I want you to know that. Also. April sixteenth from twelve to six here in the chambers, A P C D. Will be providing and giving out replacement air filters. It's a giveaway. So just be aware of that. There, I think there's a flyer that's going on the. Utility bill. Also, I found out today that we got an extension on Central Park for the deadline for the construction of the project. And that's, it goes through twenty twenty. Hopefully we can get on it quicker than that, but it's nice to just have that flexibility. Twenty twenty. And that concludes our report.
Questions?
I have a comment I think for the pinwheels for awareness that. They will be planting three hundred and ninety five pinwheels. These numbers represent one and five. Child abuse investigations in the San Marino region from twenty twenty three.
I knew you were going to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So any questions or thought? Okay, we'll go on to Director of Public Safety, Steve Cash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff and. Our community. First and foremost, I'd like to. Show appreciation to our artists here. I've seen his work. It's outstanding. And one thing I can tell you. Murals that we do have around town, it does decrease our graffiti. And we see that bridge all the time. I understand the legal aspect of it, but man, that would be an awesome project. So. Thank you for kind of bringing that. We appreciate that. The other part is right now, Public Safety is working a couple of long-term code compliance issues. Dealing with homes. And we're, we'll be eventually presenting our, our information to our city attorney. We're looking at problematic homes that we keep going back to. There's provisions to be charging for police services if it becomes incumbent on us on, on regular type of call. These are some long-term cases that we're working and so it's. We'll, we'll put more information out in the future, but it's just, just something to kind of be aware of. And the last part, I'm. Very honored to be able to put out today that on Wednesday, April third. At the Guadalupe Coastal Club. The city will be presenting an exceptional public service award to Mr. Kevin Potter. So he's. Agreed to come to Guadalupe. Pretty excited with that aspect. And so we'll, we'll have that. The staff has done amazing. Park and Rank and everybody else here, I mean, they're stepped up and admin and, and, you know, we appreciate the guidance that we've had from. From some of our council. But to make this happen is huge. And just the comments that he stated when I, I am. Not the historian of this city, but I just was able to say a few movies that were here. And first comments, he goes, maybe that's a location for a movie. I'm like, wow, okay. This can work out pretty nice. So that's. That was a nice coup and I appreciate staff who have just been bent over backwards. And our community who they're putting out. And donating services and time to be able to make this happen. So this is pretty exciting. And we will talk more about this as we kind of go further along. As we put the finishing touches on that.
Can you explain why you're always getting?
Yeah.
Apologies.
Yes.
This goes back to. Last year, twenty twenty three, where we had the flooding here in Guadalupe and we had over fifty residents. That were forced out of their home. We brought the residents here to City Hall. Because at the time, we did not have a designated emergency shelter. And with that, we were calling late nights with our wreck people just to get the gym open. But we didn't have really lights. We didn't have heat. We didn't have water. We didn't have food source. And it was pretty dire to bring the people in here. We had a red cross trailer. That was our only aspect. Of emergency preparedness. And in the night hours during the rain, we had staff. And in the night hours during the rain, we had staff putting equipment and putting together diapers and cots so that we can at least give people some sense of safety as we huddle them here. With that, we, we brought that information to one eight oh five, which is a group that was gathered down in San, Santa Barbara area after they had their floods and fires and mudslides. That was a huge loss of life. They put together concerts to raise money for first responders for equipment that cities normally could not afford, and we brought forth the idea about getting a generator. They had this concert, Mr. K, or Mr. Costner's property, and raised a lot of money for public agencies, first responders throughout the entire county of Santa Barbara. We put in and asked for grant money, and we were granted at least fifty thousand dollars for a generator. And then the city council picked in the other, so we'll be getting an eighty thousand dollar generator that will house here at City Hall that will be able to provide for the entire building. And now we can really have an evacuation center. Mr. Costner helped to put that together, not on his property, but really spoke up in our behalf. And so we would like to honor him for sticking up for our city to be able to now have a generator and which will be the first generator in our city and be able to make now a proper evacuation center for our community.
Anything else?
Question? Did you? No question. I have made a board member of one eight oh five.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item eleven, interim, interim.
I lost my recording. I do want to mention that we did hire a full-time HR manager. Her name is Sylvia Esthada, started last Monday, the eighteenth. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it. She will be here at an F meeting and all future meetings thereafter, although closed session. And every place else, the natural management needs to read. Okay, I'm very grateful. We are recruiting. We have public safety. We need to follow the candidates that I mentioned in prior council meetings with human backgrounds that haven't been completed yet. No, not yet, yeah. Recreation, this is after Zach Anis, that I have is here. And the junior center, activities coordinator. We posted the position. We have received applications, so we are still receiving applications. iPhone screen. I think I have four screens to her. When I called four, they answered, so I have phone screen two. Which will continue the activity. And Sylvia, I was taking that over. In HR, I said she started last Monday and is doing quite well. We're very pleased. In public works, the public works director. This is what was posted. Recruitment continues on that. Maintenance worker one, we have selected a candidate, and all the processes actually have been completed, and he will be starting on April second. A new position that was approved last council meeting, Brownson Minister, that has been posted. Saying Kupanga, and yesterday Sylvia already received resumes. I would ask, I haven't seen the resumes. Has anyone, any of them looked? Right, well, she said, yeah, we're pleased with that. Labor relation, the, the victims who were fired were ongoing. Well, Chris Combs, there's one injury, and he was long-term on standing plants, but it's still being monitored. The one injury was since we are hoping nothing serious at all. The plan is continuing. I have to update it. It's all right. They will be completely updated in the matter of weeks. And I mean, one critical thing I wanted to mention, hasn't been scheduled yet, but one of the first things that I suggested that Sylvia coordinate with Jay Kaya is preventing discrimination in harassment in the workplace. I haven't been scheduling quite some time. We're obligated to do so every two years, and I do know we're behind on that. So that is one of the things that we'll just send this to an. That is my last HR.
Are you sure about that?
Any questions? Joe, thank you, Rosie.
Can we do one more? One more meeting?
Next item is public hearing. Considered benefits to the subdivision ordinance title seventeen, seventeen point three, two point zero three, zero. Guadalupe Municipal Code.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Good evening. Staff will bring in ordinance amendment this evening to fix a problem with their subdivision ordinance, which is chapter seventeen of the relevant code. Over the years, you've seen staff bring a number of ordinance amendments for the zoning ordinance, but this is the first time we've done it for the subdivision ordinance, and it's about fifty years old now, and so it really does need some work. But while we plan to do a major update later this year, we felt it was necessary to do this evening because we do have a map that is being processed, and I can't record because it's inconsistent with the, with our ordinance. The previous ordinance, as you see from the staff report, showed that you had to have a minimum sixty foot wide or a six thousand square foot lot minimum for the sixty foot frontage. Because of the number of changes that occurred either through our general plan update or through state regulation, we had to make changes to those. And so the, the request we put in is that you would allow for the minimum lot size to be thirty-six hundred and thirty square feet, which is consistent with the one to twelve units per acre for the R one zoning, which was approved in the, in the general plan update, and then also through the consistency reason. So we've repaired ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash five seventeen to implement the project. Tonight's the first reading. We, if it goes forward, then we would continue this to April ninth for the second reading, and then thirty days after that, it could go into effect. The project be able to be recorded, so that's what we're asking.
Can't see the clock. Is it seven fifteen? Okay, seven fifteen will open this up to public comment. Public, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak on this, on this matter? Seven sixteen, or close public hearing? Is there a motion? Is there any questions of? Okay, is there a motion to approve introduced by Ty Lowly and waiver of the first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash five one seven? And I'll read the whole thing. Amendment section seventeen point three, two point zero three zero, the Guadalupe Municipal Code. And continue to April ninth, twenty twenty-four, the second reading and adoption. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'm hoping to approve the waiver of the first reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash by seventeen.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? Well, that group will roll call, please.
Aye.
Number Robus.
Right.
Councilman Fernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pranav. Mayor Julian.
What's your best? Thank you. Do you have any break? Okay, we'll go five minute. By logic. Thank you. Then outside of this regular business, item thirteen, approving hiring a bond financing team for the Guadalupe Royal Theater renovation project.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, and community at large. Let's get to the point. It is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution approving the hiring of a bond financing team. Jones Hall and also Wolf Hanson and Company, who is the municipal advisor. And that's Steve Gortler, and then there's James, as far as the bond council will be providing that presentation tonight. But I'll give a, just a brief discussion, and then we'll send it over to, to those guys. So over the past five years, the city has diligently worked to raise the vast majority of funding needed for the Royal Theater project, renovation project. In total, the city has secured or is in the process of securing more than ten million in grants and other financing. These consist of the following anticipated sources. Economic Development Administration EDA grant, four point eight million. California Arts Council PAC is a five million dollar grant, and then historic tax credits, about eight to nine, nine hundred thousand dollars. Final cost estimates are not yet available, but the city believes the additional approximately three million and potentially up to five million is required to ensure the project can be completed as designed. The timeline for obtaining the funding is running short. As the four point eight million EDA grant will expire, construction is not started by, somebody corrected this. I put March twenty twenty-four. It's actually March twenty twenty-five, so I apologize to that. Give us one more time. After exhaustively exploring, exploring all options, the city believes placing a bond measure on the November twenty-four ballot now represents the best option to ensure the funding for the project is in place in a timely manner. To put a bond measure on the November twenty-four ballot, specialized consultants are required. Jones Hall Professional Law Corporation would serve as the bond counsel to the city drafting resolutions and other required legal documents with review by the city attorney. Wolf Hanson and Company would serve as a municipal advisor to the city analyzing tax rate, bond interest rate and related matters. These firms have provided the following fee proposal to the city, Jones Hall ten thousand and Wolf Hanson and Company five thousand. In addition to these consultants, the Santa Barbara County Election Department would charge the city an additional fee to place the measure on the November ballot around five thousand dollars. Once the financing team is hired, they can work with city staff to further analyze potential bond measure and bring back to the city council additional action items. The professional services agreement for these consultants will be submitted to the city council for approval at a future council meeting. These additional actions are anticipated to occur in June and July in order to meet the statewide deadlines for the November twenty-four election. So in total, what could be budgeted for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget would be twenty thousand. If this passes, then the bond issuance will cover it, reimburse the general fund for those costs. So it's not going to get the this year's fiscal year or this fiscal year budgeted. So with that, if you, without further ado, if you want them to take and get the right presentation, James and.
Ladies and gentlemen. Evening, hi. Yep, you. Our senior is James, as, as I mentioned, I'm a financial consultant, an attorney. He provides various services related to project financing. I'm going to call pretty quickly because a lot of the information that we have today, you guys know a lot of it.
The public is saying they can't hear you.
Oh, yeah.
Just keep it up a little bit. There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Is that better? Yes. All right, so I'm not going to repeat what I said, but if you could skip ahead another. I'm still a little bit on the project itself, which I'm sure many of you know a lot about already. On the theater revitalization project, it's got a couple of components to it. A renovation of the existing theater, as you know, I'm sure it's shuttered. It's boarded up right now in this use. The theater itself, a five thousand foot square foot, two hundred and thirty feet theater will be completely renovated. And I've seen, you know, what's supposed to look like, quite beautiful when it's done. In addition, some new facilities will be constructed on the state of the art Performing Arts Center for hosting. In addition, some new facilities will be constructed on the state of the art performing arts center for hosting live stage productions. Live musical events, community events, educational and cultural programs for children in schools in the city as well. In addition, additional facilities, green room, classroom, meeting spaces and so forth. It's really envisioned as a as a beautiful project, very large, very broad in scope. I think it's going to provide an enormous amount of of opportunities for recreation and culture in the city. In addition to, it's obviously located in a very strategic location down down the street. It should bring people into town that should revitalize some of the commercial establishments in the area. Generate some foot traffic, some business opportunities and so forth. So it's got a lot of value, a lot of benefits. It should really be a bright star for the downtown. Our next page. On the financial aspect of it, as Todd mentioned, and this is really worth emphasizing. The project costs are still being finalized, but it's estimated that it'll cost somewhere between, say, ten, it's gonna be twelve and fourteen million dollars. Already, the city through its efforts had secured approximately ten million dollars or three quarters of the project's cost. In grant funds that don't have to be repaid. Here's a grand ten million dollars applied to the project. So the cost of financing the project that the city or taxpayers will have to bear is probably only about two, three, four million dollars. Maybe one quarter of the project cost. That's a unique opportunity. We don't really see that very often where somebody else is going to pay for your project and you're only going to pay a quarter of the cost. As you can see, some of the grant programs are listed on the on the slide here. I don't need to repeat those for you. But I think that's just probably one of the most important aspects of the financial cost of the project is the grant funding. And the tremendous efforts that the city has successfully made to obtain this grant. James can talk a little bit about some of the bond aspects of this, the remaining financing that they were talking about.
Thank you very much. Yes, James Roseniak and Jones Hall. We're a bond counsel firm on the base in San Francisco. Nice to be with everyone tonight. As Stephen mentioned, you know, the city's efforts have procured most of the funding needed for the project. But the city reached out to us as experts in municipal finance and said, we have this gap. Is there a way to fill it? We said, yes, what cities often do when there's a gap in a project is they can issue tax exempt bonds. So it's a little bit like your mortgage, right? You have a project, you have a house you want to buy, you take out a mortgage, which means you get the money upfront. And you pay it over time. Well, it's the same with a bond. The city would issue a bond. And get the money upfront, help pay for the project and pay it back over time. And there's different kinds of bonds, there's different repayment sources essentially, and we'll go through that on the next slide. But this slide is really focusing on the advantages of tax exempt bonds, which only municipalities are able to do. So you again go out and get a mortgage on your house, you're paying a taxable rate, you know, no one, the bank has got to pay taxes on the interest that they receive. But an investor in a city's bond does not pay taxes. On that bond, which means they're willing to give you a lower interest rate because it's a better economic benefit. And that's just a benefit for local agencies like cities that essentially the federal government, the Congress has. Provided tax exemption for local agencies like City of Guadalupe to fund capital projects. The whole point is to allow lower cost financing of capital projects or by cities. So that's where we come in. We specialize in tax exempt bond financing, making sure it's legal. Making sure that it fits within the tax exemption rules. So that you as a city could issue that lower interest rate, you know, the lowest possible cost of borrowing. As it says on the slide, you know, generally, cities municipalities are pretty good credit. The interest rates are relatively low because they're pretty stable, you know, local government is pretty stable. More credit worthy than just an average person seeking a loan. And then repayment terms typically twenty five to thirty years. So again, kind of similar to your mortgage. Get that money upfront, pay it back annually over twenty five or thirty years. Next slide. As I mentioned, there's multiple different kinds of tax exempt bonds that cities like the city of Guadalupe could undertake. The one we're going to focus on tonight is the general obligation bond. School districts are also able to do general obligation bonds. School districts here in the community. Have successfully gone to voters, gotten passage of general obligation and financed their public school facilities. So it's something that's familiar in the community and and cities are able to do it as well. Special tax bonds, parcel tax bonds, sale tax bonds. As the name implies, it's kind of what's the source of repayment? So the general obligation bond source is going to be a general obligation of the city, which is really the taxpayer and ad valorem property tax. Okay, so that's what a general obligation bond is. There's an additional. Ad valorem meaning based on the property value, higher property value pays higher amount, lower value, property value pays lower amount. That's the general obligation bond versus a parcel tax can be just a flat, you know, tax for parcel sale tax would of course be based on sales taxes generated in the city. As a more residential kind of smaller city, you're not generating a lot of sales taxes. It's going to be hard to, you know, bond against that revenue stream. These revenue bonds would be really a general fund obligation. You look at the city's. Except if there is any excess general fund dollars, right, and say, hey, we're going to bond against that. Obviously, that's that's problematic. It's challenging for for smaller cities like the city of Guadalupe. There's not a lot of excess funds already around. And so again, as as the slide concludes, you know, my recommendation, what makes sense from where we sit, what we see with other cities across the state would be. The general obligation bond and we'll we'll get into some more of the details of that.
Right, so it always costs the other cost. Who's going to pay for it? How much is it going to cost? How long? I mean, if it didn't cost anything, then we wouldn't even be talking about it. You'd be building it. So this is really the, you know, the gist of the matter. Even though a million dollars is coming from grant programs or from grant funds, that three million dollars could have to be repaid with interest every year over time for, say, thirty years. So it's an impossible expense. Right now, we're still sort of trying to refine the numbers. So we're giving you a range of costs that then we can. Right now, it looks like the annual cost from all of the taxpayers in the city would be roughly between five hundred and twenty five thousand and three hundred thousand dollars. Per year, every year for thirty years. Now that number will get refined and eventually we'll get it down to an exact amount. In the next month or two perhaps, and we'll give you more precise estimates, but right now the cost of the project is still undergoing, you know, review and study. And so we're giving you ranges to give you a sense of, you know, what the outcomes might look like. As as James said, it's be paid, there would be an additional amount that would be placed on the property tax bill that every parcel owner in the city receives every. I guess October, November timeframe, then you pay your property taxes in December and April. This would be another line item on that bill. You pay another, you know, another amount. Let's see. So, you know, basic part analysis, the preliminary estimates are that at the very low end. It will be between. One step. So if you own a home, you might have bought that home, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ago. It may be having assessed value for property tax purposes of one or two or three hundred thousand dollars. And that's basis that your property taxes are assessed. Alternatively, you may have bought a house, you know, six days ago at five hundred thousand dollars. And so that property might have an assessed value of five hundred thousand dollars. Are sort of, you know, back of the envelope estimates are that the average home or maybe the median home in the city. Is on the tax rolls at an assessed value of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Now, the market value of that home may be more, maybe less. The assessed value is probably around three hundred thousand dollars. For this bond issue that we're talking about, the cost of repayment each year would be roughly between eighteen and forty three dollars. Per one hundred thousand dollars, per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. So for a home with an assessed value of three hundred thousand dollars, all that's a median homeowner in the city. The annual cost on their property taxes would be roughly between fifty four and a hundred and twenty nine dollars per year, every year for thirty years. Again, that could be narrowed down once we have a better sense of what the actual cost of the project is. But that's what we're talking about. For a typical homeowner, of which there are thousands, of course, you know, and and many homeowners have higher assessed values. Many have lower assessed values. Commercial properties are going to have another, you know, different assessed value. Everybody's going to pay a slightly different amount, but, you know, we try and sort of talk about the big picture. On the average, a homeowner fifty four to a hundred and twenty nine dollars per year on their tax roll every year. And it'll be a fixed amount and it probably won't change very much from year to year. Before I go on questions on that, I mean, that's that's always kind of the crux of the matter. I'm still trying to. All right, keep going. So, you know, this is kind of obvious, but in these these bond. They have to be approved by the voter. Roughly, you know, a two thirds of the voters have to vote to approve the issue of the bond. And it's quite often the case where communities, whether it's cities or school districts or other types of municipalities. In order to successfully get a bond issued asked by the voters, they need to do a very substantial public outreach effort. Oftentimes, they form a citizens committee to reach out into the public, to educate the public, to advocate on behalf of the project and on behalf of the bond issue. And we should put a reference up there to kind of give you a sense of what some of the efforts are that are commonly made that produce a positive, a successful bond election. You know, writing letters to local newspapers, posting lawn finds, you know, all the things that you see all the time. Whenever there's an election, whether it's a ballot initiative or a candidate, it's all the same stuff. Only it's geared towards this project and 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 really it it makes a big, big difference in the success of these types of things. The more people know about the project, the more they know about the, you know, the the benefits of the project, the more likely they are to come out and report it. In this case, it's a little bit more complex in the sense that you've got this ten million dollar grant proceeds. And you're only looking to borrow three out of the thirteen million. You know, in my mind, that's a hugely important aspect of the whole thing. That's a little complicated too. To get that message out is going to require a little extra effort as well. So I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention at the forefront. So, you know, you've got a lot of time to think about that. And then.
Yeah, so a little just the proposed schedule there. If the council is interested in moving forward. As the city administrator said, I mean, we could get hired by the city, work with the city staff to kind of bring forth the resolutions. And document the numbers that it would take to actually get this on the ballot. You can sort of see the outline there. It requires two additional city council meetings under the government code provisions to authorize a general obligation bond. We would bring one action in June, another action in July in order to meet that August ninth, you know. Countywide deadline, you know, essentially that August ninth is the countywide deadline for anything to get out on the November ballot. And so we we would be targeting that and that's the November fifth election day we're looking at. If we could get to the ballot, if the two thirds of the voters voted in favor. Then we, of course, would have authorization to issue bonds for the city to finance this project. And we would envision that happening kind of in the beginning of next year, January, February, in order to meet that March twenty twenty five deadline. On grant funding that that otherwise expired. So as we said, and just to reiterate, you know, it does require two thirds voter approval. A general obligation bonds districts actually are able to approve their bonds with fifty five percent. It's a different part of the constitution that they rely on. Fifty five percent gets the school district their geo bond. Cities require two thirds. And even before we get there, the June and July actions, you know, do require two thirds of the count. To move in favor of each of those actions. So essentially four out of five. And I think, you know, this makes sense, something the whole city really needs to get behind. It's a pretty big lift to get that two thirds approval and the first with the count.
Just to end by one point though, you know, tonight, really the goal here tonight is not to authorize the issuance of the bond. This is really just the sort of the first step in a multi-step process. There will come meetings down the road where there'll be an action item on the agenda to actually move forward with the issuance of the bond. This really is more to start the process of preparing the material that will be used to authorize the issuance of the bond. But as a threshold matter, you know, there needs to be enough interest to move forward to even take the first step. In terms of the cost, you know, in addition to the cost to the homeowners and so forth, there's the cost for the city for this whole effort. I just wanted to go through that in the interest of transparency, you know, we're we're going to provide some consulting services, the legal services, financial services. To get this whole process moving forward up to the point of placing the bond measure on the ballot, you know, in the proper manner, you know, come November. If that should be the will of the council. So for the services that will be provided between now and then, legal counsel will charge the city ten thousand dollars. Our firm will charge the city five thousand dollars. The county, in order to put the measure on the ballot, will also charge the city an amount. We don't have an exact amount, but we're estimating. Between three and five thousand dollars if you put it on the November ballot because that's a general election. So those are the costs that you'll incur just to get to the, you know, sort of the the vote. If the vote should be in favor of issuing the bond, if you go that far, and then you go forward with the issuance of the bond. That whole nother process of legal and financial, you know, consulting service and so on and so forth. And there are, you know, considerable costs associated with that as well. We've estimated, you know, we've made a list of what those various services are, legal, underwriter, advisor, insurer. These are all sort of the standard fare costs that every bond issue has to incur. And we've estimated possibly roughly about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that would be incurred. If you should actually go forward and issue the bonds, that would be checked on to the three million dollars or so that you borrow from the bonds. And paid from the bond proceeds rather than from the city's own coffers. It's a large amount. You know, that's why we put it out here because we want you to know about that in advance. Bond issues are costly. The fact that it's only a three million dollar bond issue, it doesn't really drive down the cost. This is a five or ten or fifteen million dollar bond issue. It would still be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's a certain amount of cost that you incur for doing this work and it's not really driven by the by the size of the bond issue. At a much larger bond issue, of course, it would go up, but I just wanted to put that in context. So that's that's what we got to say. I mean, to take questions.
You know, this whole process and we we probably meet with Tom Bradbury and and others. Two, three times a week. It's like sausage making. You don't want to see the process because it's pretty ugly. There's just a lot going, you know, going on. And one, two things. One is that we don't really know the exact amount of the the actual bill. So we know that it's going to be over, but we don't know how much it's going to be over. I know that we haven't had, we don't have that figure yet.
No, the we're hiring estimator to get us a little dialed in, but the actual true cost will be when the bids come in. So that's when you'll you'll really get to know.
And the second thing is that in terms of community outreach. The city cannot be involved in actual processing of movement. We can't put signs up. We can't. And officially can't do anything with it. That's why you're talking about, you know, you know, a campaign outside the city, outside the city hall. In terms of moving this forward, so.
Yeah, that's a very important point. The city is not being allowed under the state law to use city resources. To advocate on behalf of a bond measure. There are, you are permitted to use educational efforts to inform the public. But whether it's staff time or 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 city resources cannot be applied for advocacy of the bond measure. And that's why the citizens committee, which are purely independent of the city and occur and and operate outside the, you know, the purview of the city council. Are formed because there's active interest among the citizens to participate in the process, to advocate for the project and for the bonds and so forth.
And I think another item that's important is that with the E D A, the Fed. You have to have the money upfront in order for that for us, for them to give the money.
Yes.
So we can't, we we say we don't have a full amount for the construction of this, of this twelve million dollars. That five, that five million dollars is is not coming our way. So if we if we sit and wait and they and don't do anything. It's it's going to hinder us in the sense that we may not get the ten, five million if we don't have this effort moving forward.
And and if you did a capital campaign and the timing of this, that would be almost. To raise three million, five million would be very difficult. We've looked into that and other financing sources and. If this went to a vote, it would truly be a community project then if they voted for it. So that's the way I kind of look at this and bonding has been all over and. I think when you look at the the costs per home, it's not extraordinary. And I think also. I I shouldn't say that in terms of the homeowner. They say I'm crazy. But at the same time, you can see the economic benefit of this and the multiplier effect of having a theatre in there. And how that'll draw more into the community, which will be an economic, I think, sevenfold for every dollar spent. So that'll help restaurants, that'll help drive a new business, that'll help build the vacant buildings. So for me, I did look at it in terms of my experience that. That'd be an anchor for the community, which would draw not only just from a financial standpoint, but also from a cultural standpoint. So it would be really, to me, it's a, we got a great return on our investment at ten million, the two grants for five million.
Now that, in, in the terms of, of the legal counsel and the municipal advisor, you know, the fifteen thousand and it would just go forward with the county, there's another five thousand. Um, what are we, what, what are we getting for your council and municipal advisors? In terms of what do we, what do we see in, in front of us in terms of paper? What are we going to look at? Are, are you doing any, uh, you know, digging into the, the, the price values of the, of the, of the homes? Or what's, or the commercial areas then?
Well, uh, well, there's a couple of, that's a good question. There's actually quite a few sort of moving parts, if you will. Um, I, I, I'll defer to James on all of the legal matters and, you know, the ballot itself and so forth. From a financial consultant perspective, um, you know, they're trying to understand, um, how much the bonds are going to cost the city, how that's going to impact on the taxpayers, um, you know, preparing the estimates, um, analyzing what the distribution will be among the various categories, it's commercial, it's residential, it's industrial, it's agricultural. You know, trying to understand who's going to pay how much. Um, um, and then, you know, from my perspective, all of the legal documents that are prepared, I review all those documents as well. Make sure I understand and make sure I agree with them, you know, uh, that's sort of another set of eyes on top of all the documents. Um, there's probably more to it, um, but those are sort of the things that pop up minds.
Yeah, and I can jump in on the, on the legal side of things. Uh, as was shown on the schedule, we would be coming back to the city council for two meetings. There's a series of resolutions that would need to be adopted by the council to place the measure on the ballot. There's actually also an ordinance, um, to place the measure on the ballot, it's under state law. Uh, of course, state law, that's in the government code. We also have to make sure we are complying with the California constitution, which governs the, how general obligation bonds are, uh, voter approved. And as many, uh, probably know, there's actually a constitutional initiative, uh, scheduled for the November ballot as well. It's called Initiative nineteen thirty-five. Uh, it would change a lot of provisions, uh, regarding taxes and voter approval of tax. Um, it's currently in litigation, governor is, is, uh, to, to keep it off the ballot, but proponents want it on the ballot. So we're keeping track of that. We would, of course, help the city work for those issues and the impact, uh, if that were to pass. Uh, and then, as I mentioned earlier, there's, there's, that's on the state law side. There's a whole federal tax law side analysis that we at Joan Paul undertake as well. Uh, we understand from Tom Bradbury that there's a nonprofit involved with the theater as well. So it's a successor agency owned property to be given to the city, the city owned, but also nonprofits involved. And we need to analyze that to make sure, again, uh, the tax exemption rules are followed, which again are for the benefit of cities, municipalities, not, you know, private entities, nonprofits, that kind of thing. So that, that's where we come in on the legal side.
Um, the mayor, the mayor and I have met with Tom, and there's also been discussions about, well, don't scale the building, you know, make it smaller, uh, but the, why not build the building in a way that's for the community that's robust? And the HVAC and the new has to support the old. The remodeling of the old has to stay the same. They're intertwined, AD accessibility has to go up to the back and access, not from the front, but from the new, um, um, the, the new addition, which then has an elevator. So they're really intrins- intrinsically put together and between the grants. So you got the complexity of two different types of grants. Um, the building itself is tied together, it's part and parcel of, kind of together, you know? They have to be done together. Um, this is just a way to access money, funding quicker, I think, and making sure that the project gets completed.
Uh, which is part of the, the council. I know, uh, there are several, uh, individuals in which to speak or have, one of them is, uh, picture from, you know, you won't bring it up? You'll be the third. Um, one of the things, nothing, we're Shirley's, uh, here is, I'm going to, David, can you read this?
Yeah, sure. Um, so, so, um, Shirley, um, provided, Shirley Boyson provided a
Worth reading.
An email, and I'll read it out loud. Um, I strongly urge the council and any residents speaking tonight to carefully assess the proposal to contract with two firms to raise more funds for the Royal Theater revitalization. If the bond proposal is agreed upon, that means fifty to seventy dollars annually on homeowner's property tax bills for the next thirty years, the usual life of a bond issue. Spending fifteen to twenty thousand to raise another five or more million for the theater project does not pencil out for property owners. Project has ten million plus in hand now, so why not proceed in phases, as has been done with Leroy Park and other projects? The ten million plus will allow the upgrades, proper bathrooms, dressing rooms and performers. The theater will then be ready to be rented for general use, speaker presentations, musical performances, dance programs, school graduations and many other uses. The money from rentals, or maybe even the lease, will add to the building funds for the second phase, the three-story building, and that too also requires a careful look. Allen Hancock College has a well-planned and accredited film program for college age and adults. Why try to duplicate that here? And what is the need for a large kitchen? Lompoc City, um, has a theater similar in size and ages as Ro- as the Royal. Citizens there have been working for ten plus years to bring it to life. We should do the same, fundraise to augment the rental revenue before going into further debt on a long-range project when in, in a shorter time, the theater can be ready for use if slightly redesigned for the restoration in a shorter amount of time. That's it.
Okay. Um. Pass for, uh, Romero. Gentlemen, you can take, take a seat and then maybe you'll fire a question over there.
Well, good evening there and welcome to, uh, for now. Uh, glad to have you here. My name is Francis Romero, I'm a former mayor of Guadalupe, among many other positions I've held over the last twenty-five years, twenty-seven years. I, I don't have anything else that I've prepared, but I have some random comments that I think you should consider. Um, I do not see that you've done any type of, uh, voter sentiment survey. And you have some time to do that between now and June. You have an opportunity to have an consultant at some cost do a random survey of your homeowners registered in both parties to see how people would look at a bond measure. If you're looking at really low numbers, maybe that gives you some pause. If you're looking at really high numbers, then yay. Um, public outreach, that is going to be a citizen-driven exercise as you go forward with this. Uh, the fee, I guess it's a fixed fee that we're looking at for the ten thousand dollars. Knowing what attorney's cost, if they're charging five hundred an hour, that's twenty hours of time for that ten grand. Hopefully that's enough to get their work done. If it's four hundred an hour, you're looking at twenty-five hours. So hopefully that is fixed, and you won't have any surprise cost coming up with that. Um, I do agree with some of what Shirley has to say, and I want to thank Todd for some information he provided me earlier today. Uh, there has to always be a backup plan. November's the election, you find out whether or not it happens, you've got some work. So what is a backup plan? And maybe it is having to scale back some of the more expenses and that amenity. So something to consider. Uh, looking forward to seeing how this turns out. I do know that when you look at bond measures by themselves, it's only ten dollars a month. But then you look at the list of bond measures on your tax bill at the end of the year, and most of us come up very happily. But it's for pretty much everything that's come up through schools, and the list is pretty long. Uh, costs are not coming down, incomes are not rising, and inflation doesn't seem to be moving much either. So I would recommend doing some sort of voter sentiment. I can give you a couple of really good consultants that you could contact regarding that. And they are firms that can kick out a survey license for you and probably less than one. And you'd at least have some additional information to gain community support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. By the way, yeah, looking at value added, we even look at the whole picture, trying to say a, a stove in the kitchen. Do we need that right away? So looking at our design, Andrew Goodman Design, we're actually looking at what do we need right now? So we reduce the, reduce the cost, because there's some things you don't, you don't need right away. There's other things you need right away, just like that, the first, uh, E D A money is for the actual show itself, the theater. And in order for the VAC, for HVAC system, for everything else, the electrical system, you need that second portion, which is designed to house all the HVAC and everything else, the, the mechanical systems. So you can't just do the one and not, not the other. You can't, uh, there was a, there was a thought to, it's three-story, to eliminate uh, the, the third and the fourth story, can't, because it's, it's, it's part of the mechanical system. You can't just eliminate that, because then you can't, you can't, uh, you can't use the theater, which from the E D A side of things, because it's, uh, it's important to have, of course, mechanical H, HVAC systems, but everything else that you need still. Um, let's see. Mr. Muniz.
Good evening. Uh, I wasn't even aged tonight, but, um, just hope my voice holds out. Uh, regarding this issue, um, I'll give you some voter sentiments right now, some homeowner's sentiments and a resident's that we've been writing out. But before I do, I got to tell you my, my background in theater. Before I was just, I had a career, um, in marketing and communication for several decades that was built on my experience in the theater. I've written, I've directed, I've had shows, traveled up and down the state. Um, and, uh, so my love and affinity for the art is, you know, it's as high as you can build. We need that. I don't believe in a sentiment that if we build it, they will come. And echoing the, the woman's, uh, comments before me about, you need some sort of data. You need data to support that building this view, huge beautiful complex, which I totally would want. Um, needs more data to support it. Because while we talk tonight, while you talk tonight at the thirty thousand level, the thirty thousand feet level, I was just for a second bringing it down to the death channel. On my hand, I can count the number of seniors that have to pay, play upstopp with their check every month. I know a woman who doesn't get insulin all the time, she can't afford it. I know a group of, of few seniors that have to pool their money and give money to me to go to Costco to buy stuff in bulk and then give it broken down so that they don't have to pay as much for meat. That's the thoughts I think of when you say, um, fifty-four to a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That's not much. Well, yeah, a grad senior thinks maybe. Good for the senior center, senior citizen that's living here all their lives and have maybe their houses stayed off. Great. And now their house is valued at what, four hundred, five hundred thousand? So now they're caught, they're partaking in this, they're paying for it. And it's what, going to be two, two hundred out of their budget a month or whatever it is? Dollars, you know, these aren't just figures for going around, they're, they're actually all you know, I don't need to say that anymore, but anyway, I just wanted to bring it down to the death channel level. And, uh, and for me to change my mind, because right now my vote is no on bond X. But to change my mind, I would really need to see what's the value added to the community, long range, short range? Thanks. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Let's see, another one. Well, that was it. Any other, any, any other individuals to speak on this item? Okay, come, come to the council, any, uh, thoughts? This, uh, again, this is like, um, making sausage, it's a tough one, because there's a lot of moving parts. Um, I think, uh, we have ten million bucks, ten million dollars, you can get that every day. And personally, if, if we don't, it's, it's probably going to come in more than, uh, it's going to come in more than ten million. But I don't know how much, uh, it's projected, like it's talked about maybe three to five million. That's a lot of money. Uh, where do you get that? Uh, you can't, can't have fundraisers, I'm going to do it, you know, but look at Lompoc, I think Shirley mentioned Lompoc. It's taken years for them to, you know, to generate, uh, resources to get that fixed, so. Uh, discussion in the council.
Sure. Um, Todd, what is the percentage of, I mean, Goodwin's plans are completed, would you guess anything?
Um, I think he's about ninety percent, I think he's hundred percent, I believe, but there's been some desire to, to amend them, you know, just based on from A V's, uh, but for the most part, we had to use, remember we used fu- fund from the, the bond exit revenue to actually develop the plan? That then wasn't, that allowed us to get the grant by providing those, those civil engineering and architectural items. Well, yeah, the, uh, actual, uh, drawings are pretty, pretty well complete.
Yeah, they're pretty much done. The, I talked about value added, and another thing was, we were looking at that, um, the area of, you know, a walk-in, not the walk-in area, but the gazebo, but, uh, yeah, the
Amphitheater.
To eliminate that, uh, uh, we don't know the cost, specific cost. We, we do know that, is that, uh, um, Andrew has that information?
Yeah.
I think it was unique with that, because I think, I believe we qualified for that, um, keeping the Royal Theater in that Art Deco nineteen thirty-nine, um, front facade, but upgraded all the way through. So, I mean, just to tie that in, then everybody knows with the rising, uh, you know, cost of work, it's, 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 it's exuberant, crazy, you know? But we got to take advantage of that money setting.
Yeah, and again, I mentioned that, uh, the, the Fed's E D A is saying, if you don't have the money up, if you don't have the money in the bank, you're not going to get the, you're not going to get the five million. Um, I hate to lose that. Any comments, other?
If you lose that, you lose the project.
Yeah, you lose the project.
I know, um, a lot of the time when it's in the design, where we can help us there, but as a community member and homeowner in here, I was like, just two years, we just passed two more bonds for them to build a new school, you know, buy some materials and everything went on. And looking at everything, there are a lot of people in our community that are on a fixed income. You know, this kind of stuff is something that affects those individuals. And, you know, the Royal Theater is a historical landmark here in our town. And with all that, you know, I would love to see it be up and running and, you know, generating something. But the thing about it too is we need to start small. You know, we all look at the big picture of everything and it all looks nice. But what does it come down to? Comes down to money. And I've said it before, you know, we don't have a tax revenue. Our tax revenue is very limited to what we can do. You know, we don't have a lot of people coming through here. I mean, if we can set up to do this in phases, like we did Leroy Park, you know, it would be nice. Um, another thing is, you know, we still haven't got any thing knowing when they're going to start doing commercial land right here at the front of Plaza De La. That's land sitting there with tax revenue that could be generated to help, or we wouldn't have to put another bond on, on the measure to have our taxpayers pay for that. I just see there's things that we need to look at and, um, mentioned in the city, and, um, Mrs. Romero said a good thing was a survey. You know, um, calling the voters, you know, and seeing what their thoughts are on it. You know, um, I'll be wanting to say, when they passed this past two measures for the school, I wasn't for it. I'm not afraid to say it. I was supportive of it because they didn't change nothing on what they told us four years prior, when we did the first committee. And the people were telling us, oh, because we didn't have a school, you know? And it's something that we need to look into is, you know, getting the voters' input on it for another bond to be added to the property tax for the next thirty years. And all, that's my thing.
Wait a minute. Did you say something, or?
I don't know. I think this is a difficult decision, because we only have one year to make that, raise two million dollars.
Last, okay. I do. The new lady on the block. It's up to you. It's up to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Um, I, I have, I actually, I have lots of thoughts. Um, just listening to you all, I appreciate everybody's perspective, um, I think that it depended on the final numbers, what homeowners will have to pay in taxes, you know, it can break down to ten or twenty dollars a month. Now that is not, that is not a lot to some, but it is a lot to some people. Um, and I respect that and understand that, but if all, if we all come together and we, you know, pay that depending on how you look at it, we pay that amount, a small amount in the scheme of the Royal Theater project, we can get this thing going, so you know, it's like the community coming together to to finish this project that we all want to see, you know, finished, so that, that is my thought, um. But I do believe that, you know, there are other valuable resources as well.
I think uh, this is one option, we're looking at right now, but the other options in terms of, is there a donor out there? That's gonna kick in three million dollars, uh.
Kevin?
Correct that, that was the, the assessed value.
It's that value, yes.
That's not the market value. That's not the market value, that's the assessed value, what you purchased your home when you purchased it.
That's correct, that's correct.
With slight increases, but I'm a.
Well, we have a new development, we, we need to do that, but uh.
And theoretically, I mean, if you're looking at people that are buying new homes in the upper amounts, they're really paying the lion's share. If you think about it, in terms of contributing to the idea of of something that I think if you put the theater and get it running, it'll be incremental. Put that there, then more economic activity will start, then maybe commercial will develop in the eighteen acres like Paco Dera. The eighty million of Caltrans money tying in, undergrounding all that electric. And then by putting more commercial in between, before you know it, in ten years, you're seeing these little pieces that will provide economic development for the community, which will help drive everybody's life.
I agree, it would be a cornerstone for our city.
Yeah, beautiful. And obviously, I'm biased.
Well, you know, Satan, but uh, an old Greek proverb, that society grows great when people plant trees for shade. They will never sit in.
Gotta get a good operator.
What's a wish in the council?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I could just, I, I, I think that the council is looking, seems like they're looking too far down the road, there's a lot of steps along the way. This issue before you really comes down to whether you're willing to basically gamble fifteen thousand dollars of the, the general fund money to hire a firm to start the process. That money will not come out of the general fund if bond passes, but that will depend on whether you actually approve the contracts at the next meeting, because we're not hiring them tonight, you're only authorizing the process to start, so can still back out of it in two weeks, if that's your wish. But if they get hired and they start doing their work, then we're on the hook for fifteen thousand dollars, not to exceed, I've read the contract. Um, so that answers that question, that, that won't be any more than that. Um, and then you still have the option, you know, based on if we, if maybe you want us to do a survey and you authorize us to look into that and, and maybe spend a little bit more money, find out how the voters feel, so maybe by June or July, we get the information and it looks good or it doesn't, and you can make a really informed decision at the time, so rather than, my suggestion to you at that point is not to look at this like you're making the decision whether this goes on the ballot tonight, just whether we want to even consider it, or it's already, we're not even interested in going down this road at all and learning more.
What's the percentage? I'm not a mathematician, so you got ten thousand of fifteen thousand divided by ten million. How much money are we spending?
Are you calculating that?
The percentage of money that we lose, we don't move forward with it.
And ultimately, it is, I mean, just to get to the ballot, to even have the registered voters look at it, they decide themselves, you know? That's a point to think about.
You know, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Costa's, uh, you know, position on this, because we, people, uh, percentage wise, eighty percent voted for the school, for both, both of our, the measured, our tax measures and, uh, you know, in the school. The, the theater, the show is in the middle of our, at the heart of the city. Uh, somebody mentioned, uh, I think it surely mentioned that we, we were actually asking the D C P A or the, uh, Hancock College to be part of this whole process too. So there's, where we, the, the group is reaching out to all the avenues in terms of trying to get this thing moving forward, so. Um, I think it's.
It's less than one point five percent.
Yeah.
What is it?
Yeah, it's, yeah. Zero, zero, yeah.
Yeah, zero point one five, five percent, correct?
Yeah, I, I honestly didn't do the math, but yes, now that I do it, yeah, you're right.
Small amount, I just wanna make that correction.
And I, and I like the pre, uh, the pre-concept, if we don't do it, uh, who's gonna do it? It sounds like you wanna make a motion on it. I mean.
I mean, you're not obligated to the hundred and sixty.
No, it's supportive to go to the voters, sure, absolutely. That the voters decide, you know?
I'd make a motion, but I don't know how.
It's not, it's under staff for recognition.
Okay, well, you're right, I will.
Okay. Is, is there a motion to a good resolution twenty twenty four uh, dash twenty six, the resolution in City Council, the city of the authorization to hiring of Jones Hall, a professional law corporation and, and uh, W, I can't see that. Okay, enhancing the company to assist in the bond financing for the Royal Lebe, Royal Theater renovation project. Got your motion?
I make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior?
Oh.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Fernand?
Hi.
Mayor Julian?
Hi. Resolution then. Thank you all, uh, for those who spoke, uh, for and against it, it's, it's good to hear, uh, comments, feelings. All right. Item fourteen, renamed of Central Park. At least you're on. Miss Barajas.
Barajas.
Thank you. Since some of this happened before I was hired, I'm going to read the report, uh, just because I wanna be thorough. Um, and then we can go from there. Um, so there were discussions by the Recreation and Parks Commission regarding the renaming of Central Park, Central Park. And it began, began last year. Around, um, the times the names of the streets in Paco Dera community were going to be renamed after local Guadalupe veterans. The idea of renaming Central Park came up. Of course, um, over the course of multiple Recreation and Parks Commission meetings, the commission began to develop the idea of re recommending the renaming of Central Park to be named after something significant to Guadalupe. During the March meeting last year, Commissioner Emily Dryling, uh, mentioned the march that marches Women's History Month and recommended to the commission that Central Park be renamed after Guadalupe Female of Significance. Over the course of the next few meetings, the commission discussed, rather than naming it after one single female, to rename it La Mujeres Park to recognize women as a whole. In order to still recognize an individual female, the commission recommended having a Woman of the Year nominated by the community to be recognized each year. Um, changing the name of Central Park to La Mujeres Park would not only allow the new name uh, along with the renovation of the park itself, but also recognize the women of Guadalupe who have made uh, positive impact on the community and its members. Um, the process uh, of selecting a recipient for the Mujeres Park Woman of the Year Award and inscribing her name on a professional memorial plaque at the park, uh, would be reviewed and discussed in the future.
Thank you. Any comments before we open up, uh, and there's several way for, uh, individuals wishing to comment on this. Um, we'll start with a, a written comment, written in correspondence, Shirley. Uh, that's gone, I'll leave it, I see it. It's from Shirley Boyston, uh, uh, received today via email. The renaming of the now Central Park needs much broader decision is made. Something significant as the agenda narrative said, that would not be another person's name. We have O'Connell Park and Leroy Parks already, the new name should be something significant, yet generic and pertinent. Las Mujeres may be viewed as sexist, no male, or even racist in today's culture. Naming of an, an annual woman of importance is to be commended, but not in conjunction with the park. A park has been in that area since, at least nineteen twenty, at least, uh, a park has been in that area since nineteen uh, twenty six, when the little jail was built there. And prior elevated tank were completed in nineteen twenty eight. It will be between twenty, twenty twenty six and twenty twenty eight, when the park upgrades are completed. How about the name Centennial Park, which will note an era in the city's growth and, uh, cities, citizen involvement, Shirley Boyston. Uh, next, the person, Emily, uh, Dryling, uh, please come on, thank you.
Right, second time's a charm, right?
There you go.
All right, well, thank you, uh, so I know many of you already, my name is Emily Dryling and I am one of the Parks and Recreation uh, commissioners here, and I do have two of my other commissioners joining me, uh, here today as well. Well, as we were talking about it, one of the things that is very consistent across our community is that our community wants a sense of pride, we want the sense of belonging, we want the sense of being able to contribute and to be a part, and so thinking through how we came up with Las Mujeres was talking about, in our entire city, we have one street named after a female, it's not even in existence yet, but it's gonna be in Paco Dera Phase Three. All of our parks are named after, um, different men in our community as well. And if you zoom out of Guadalupe and look at the state of California, only two state parks are named after women and only one national park in California are named after women. And so we really thought this would be a great opportunity to rename a park that can be more inclusive of our entire population here in Guadalupe. I'm absolutely not saying that the men that the streets and the parks are named after have done significant contributions, but this is an area that we are lacking in representation, and it would give us the opportunity to really be inclusive and not only name it after one person, but someone on a yearly basis, they have the opportunity to continue to evolve and continue to recognize those contributions over the course of the year. So as a Parks and Recreation Commission, we did want you to consider this recommendation as something that would really put Guadalupe on the map. Um, it is something that is forward thinking, it's something that we want to increase representation. And just thinking of March is Women's History Month, as we move into August, that's Women's Quality Day. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to help educate, especially the young girls in our community, like we have a park here in our community and it's one of the very few that are actually represented in the state of California, and that it gives us the opportunity to be able to showcase really fifty percent of our population that's not yet been represented, um, in our other street names and parks. So thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, this is, uh, Professor Merrill.
Well, good evening again, um, as I mentioned, I was mayor once and I have been the only one mayor ever elected in Guadalupe, and it's been eight years since being incorporated. I currently serve on a nationwide nonprofit board of advisors for a bipartisan women's group made up of former elected officials, there are about a thousand of them. I got the honor to serve with a variety of former Congresswomen, Attorney Generals, and we have someone from Guadalupe, which blows my mind all the time when anybody's women, we fund uh, efforts to get more women in politics regardless of party. I have to say, I'm a little torn on this one, the former park commissioner for both the county and the city, because there is a lack of representation for women, but I don't know that, I, I tend to agree with Shirley, that having a gender specific name on a park, I'm not, I'm not quite there, but I do think that a very nice improvement at Centennial Park, if it were to be renamed, Centennial is, as Shirley suggests, with a perpetual monument and perhaps an improved area with a gazebo where, uh, women, moms and their children can go and reflect would be a, a nice thing to do. And there's nothing that's supposed to come through, to be renamed over time, uh, just lack of inclusion, but on, on one hand, I do feel that being non-specific woman's name is kind of, it's not going to be just a woman's park, it's a park for everybody and just some of the house, you know, the role boys are gonna go to the girl park, who knows? But anyway, um, I think that before you, you jump and you make the name change, you should consider other options to recognize women in some significant community.
Thank you. Mister Muniz?
That's a lot of the planning meetings towards this, um, reorganization of the park, redevelopment of the park. And I remember that one of the ideas that was established was to have a centralized gathering spot. I assume they took that notion from the name, uh, Central Park, why it's called that and what, why it's specifically, um, named that. They were a park, of course, is named for the Leroy family who, who in the deed to the city or to the emerging town, it specified in perpetuity that the land would always be used for the, um, for town activities and for its town, um, collegiate and. I'm not, I, to find myself, Mrs. Romero, we didn't, we didn't care note, but I'm also torn. As a member of the historical society and, and I work with the cemetery board, you know? I am up to my eyeballs in history, kind of beautiful, wonderful tapestry that Guadalupe is, behind every great path, there is a great woman. Petro Concepcion, you know? She, uh, she came here in the nineteen thirties and was here her entire life from Mexico, was intrinsic to the life at the church and the life in the senior center. In the eighties, she was going to the senior center and served in lunch to other, other, uh, seniors in her age. You know, well, other women that I can think of, the women that I grew up with, the women's story that I told last February, there's such a beautiful, beautiful tapestry here, but to, to use the park to honor them, I think, I think we could do better. We could have an annual affair at the park, and we can honor, uh, we can honor several women every year that are part of this community. Maybe they didn't build a, a building, and maybe they weren't part of this, and maybe they didn't head this community. Maybe they were just living their lives and raising their children and part of the community. And, and so I, I would suggest or put forward to call it the Guadalupe Park. It's supposed to be for everybody and for the whole community, and yet, we can already hear some marketers going, well, they're proud of that. The people would say Guadalupe's Park, and then they would think Leroy Park, well, go get over it. Anyway, but those are my thoughts and, and I also did want to mention too, if you do change it and you name it for the individual, I assume that there's signage involved and there's an effort to let the world know that you've done that, and what costs, how, how would that cost the stores and who would be paying for that and who would be organizing them? And, um, again, honoring Guadalupe, the women of Guadalupe, past, present, and the future is, um, something that should be done all the time, but thank you for your.
Thank you. Anybody else about their, big? And the commissioners? Emily? I call, we're here in this. Oh. Um, yeah, I, I looked at the opposition and particularly the email.
Um, yeah, I, I looked at the, uh, opposition and particularly the email that was written on this, and I took exception to two things, one, that this is somehow sexist, and the other is somehow racist. I mean, we're in a male-dominated world, let's face it. Anytime we get the opportunity to think out of the box, believe something after a woman, and in this state generally, women in general, I think it's a great opportunity, and I think, in terms of the racism there. In that case, if we follow that logic, let's start changing Las Anima Park, let's change all these other parks that have, you know, Latino or Hispanic things. It just doesn't resonate with me, and I really think you should consider naming the park, but yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, uh, that Shirley mentions in nineteen twenty-eight, it was, uh, it was a park, it, there was a, a pond, they used to shoot frogs down there. So, uh, I didn't even know when we called it Central Park, I was talking to Phil.
Yeah, but you can't shoot.
I used to frog in Spain.
Rana?
Rana.
Rana.
Rana?
Rana.
Um, I'll let, I'll let.
As a woman of color, I can't be uplifted within. Um, I grew up here in the city of Guadalupe, um, and my mother told me I couldn't speak Spanish, that I wouldn't be excluded from certain things at school. I mean, I think it's really important that we empower girls, strengthen our economy, making sure that they are awful other people. With the more that we can, we can go even higher.
You move it.
I agree with her.
So, when you look at the street name, everybody thinks males. The streets are named after last names, not particular to any specific gender. You know, Tagazini, that's a Tagazini family. Cabodanico, Cabodanico family. Hernandez, you know, it's, it's a last name. It's not saying that it's a specific gender as a male that it's after. There's, how many parks here?
Perfect. Big and Little, twelve?
Well, the, the, okay, well, the, without pass.
Without pass, it's here.
Okay, well, so either, hey, Jack O'Connell Park. I was the kid when they named that park. Lee Royd Park, that's been Lee Royd Park for years, since I was a kid growing up. You know, my grand, my grandfather lived on Tagazini. That park technically is not really named, but that's, we call that Tagazini Park. You go to the park that's off of Third and Lindy. That used to be Third Street Park to us until they named it after Paco Perea, who was one of, uh, who used to work here and died in a car accident years back, and he was, he would open the gym for us for basketball. You know, so to look at it as difference, it's like, there's a lot of women in our community who have done outstanding things, you know? Um, maybe making something like, you know, who mentioned, you know, having an annual celebration. But even if still kind of, you know, Central Park or Guadalupe, the Daniel Park would be more surprising, it's including everybody, because it's more of a family thing. I know, that's my take on it.
I would.
Yeah.
I, I have no problem with, uh, Los Mujeres Park either. Um, I mean, we, like, we live in a society where it is male-dominated. And a lot of the names that are out there, um, just to, you know, to remember them, yeah, I don't have any issues with that, right? Um, yeah.
I agree with that.
Right, yeah. There's, there's.
Um, I think one of the things that has been said multiple times is that it's not inclusive, to call it Las Mujeres, but at the same time, how is Lee Royd Park or Jack O'Connell Park or Paco Perea Park being inclusive of females or being inclusive of, even kind of to what Shirley was saying, if you're thinking about race, like, if we're really going to be that specific about it, there's a bunch of parks that are not inclusive. In Santa Maria, there's like Robin Ventura, there's all kinds of parks that are named after specific people. And I feel like the idea behind this was to be inclusive, to include females. So, I, I don't really, and one of the things that we had talked about during the commission meeting was, when we do each year during March, pick somebody and do a ceremony, is to have like a Women's Day type of festival at that park. But, I don't know, that's just my.
There's, uh, thank you, thank you, Hannah, there's one street named after a woman. Julia Drive. And I said, I'm going to put in on the end of it, because that's what we do. You look at Dorothy Olivera, Peter Miro, um, uh, what's her name, Betty S. Gilva. Um, I, I see a picture of their softball team that we used to play, that they used to play, not me, we, they used to play, this is back in the thirties.
Be careful.
They had, they would, there was, they played against the WAX in the, at Cook and beat them, softball. And, um, um, I think that it's time, uh, it's time for us to show the community that we, that we do respect women. And, because we do, and now you can make a motion.
I make a motion to the Southside with number twenty-three four down.
Do a second.
I said, I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior?
Hi.
Councilmember Robles?
Hi.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Fernand?
Hi.
Mayor Julian?
Thank you. Allison Owens.
Okay.
But Hannah, that means you need to come back every year.
I will. I think the first one should be Amelia Vega.
Yeah, did, did you hear that? She wants it in a minute. She wants it in a minute. Excellent. Just the, um, the next, um, what's on this slide presentation will be the approves resolution, this necessity to issue bonds, or wait, no, I'm sorry, that's not until June, forget it. I jumped ahead. Nothing.
Um, item sixteen, announcements, council activity reports, and Jean at the council.
I got a couple of things.
All right.
What? Yeah. So. I wanted to say, as I did a, for a, wait, one of that. I encouraged my other fellow councilmembers to talk with Devin or Dave and go out there and kind of see the process that go through with it. You know, it's not as bad as you think, sir, you can go out there.
Oh, I've been through many of them.
Have you been to art?
Yeah, but not, not, but I've been through other mechanical systems as well.
Actually, I, I, it was pretty interesting to see a lot of the stuff that we have there that can really help, that needs some upgrading on. Uh, and things, and I told them, I'd, I'd come back and let my fellow councilmembers know that, you know, we ever get a chance, take it forward to kind of see the process, and they showed me how the process goes, and I'll tell you, man, that last process, when they pulled out the, that pulled the water, that gets re cleared out for, you know, it's not powerful waters, it goes out for the land and stuff. How clear it is, I was amazed that. The stuff that they pull from there to deal with is pretty cool. And then my second thing is, I know, um, they're talking about fundraisers going on at the Red Mart this weekend, but there's also the, it's called Steam Club from McKenzie will also be having a fundraiser this weekend at the local club, from, I believe it's twelve to five. And be, it's, it'd be nice to have some of our staff and, um, community members go out. I went to the one they did a few months back, wasn't very well advertised about, but it's something that's pretty cool, because, uh, the teacher that does it is one of the teachers, the science teacher, uh, at McKenzie, and he uses this money to help take the kids down to LA for film trips, uh, to go to like, um, art museums and stuff like that. So, it was pretty interesting, pretty cool, so, just those are the two things.
What's Steam, uh, stamp?
Yeah, I, I just know it's, uh, the A is for art, but it's a, it's a double G. Um, math is one of them, engineering, arts, and math. Yeah, they, it used to be stem, but they put, they made it steam, so that was the day.
Oh, okay. Art is adding a little more steam on it.
Yeah, so that's what, so it'd be pretty, yeah, pretty nice to.
So that's from the five, that's so good.
Twelve to five.
What are you going to have?
Uh, whatever the social.
Okay.
So, part of the proceeds go, yeah, wine, uh.
The kids is for.
No, the kid will be there, but it's, uh, one of the proceeds go
to that.
To, to that program to help fund for, uh, the charity.
The mobile market will be here March thirtieth, uh, this weekend, I don't know the hour, but we can.
Green or shine?
Please, okay, around that time, we'll post it on some media. Uh, the Kiwanis also just started their fundraising, also since the Guadalupe community. They're hosting their fashion show in April.
Excuse me, can you repeat the date for that, the mobile market?
The mobile market will be March thirtieth from one to three.
Yeah, um, podcasts, um, wrestling programs, our numbers have actually exceeded, um, that was our first year program, we're at twenty-five. Right now, we're at fifty-nine. I've got sons and girls that are coming out for wrestling, and, and guess what? They're getting it, um, they're getting on it, we got some grit. Um, they're learning what hard work is and discipline. Um, they're twatting quite a bit, I got guys out there, boys, girl, um. We're promoting, uh, higher education, we're making, we're, we're, uh, making it mandatory, you know, with the school program, with the minimum two point oh, no abs, you can't have, uh, no use, unsatisfactory behavior. So, we do have a press tournament on the thirteenth at Mesa Middle School, and it will be all girls, and some of our novice boys who've never stepped on a mat. And I think that alone is still about close to forty. So, it's exciting, uh, it's going to be a quick month and a half, and, and we have, uh, three tools here at City Hall, so I want you guys to come out and check them out, and, um, got to coordinate with, uh, chief, if we can get a standby out there. Those dates, uh, should be exciting. That's it.
Briefly, uh, dispatch last Thursday, Padilla County Association of Government, SDK, and Eric Pushing, a troll to submit, uh, they're the government center. Um, a lot of money going into the roads, so, and a good portion of it's coming here to North County. But then, uh, some of you may have been there at the Rock to Wildwood Reserve, uh, ribbon cutting this past, uh, Friday. I went there, I was, I, I went there Sunday. Uh, Saturday, I was talking to the ranger of Tina, and at seven thirty in the morning, the parking was full. Lot was full already. I went there yesterday, uh, Sunday at ten, the parking was full. And all you see is fishermen, and the reason they're there, fishing is good, good.
Love for.
Yeah. Go further down, you get several plants, so, all the way to fish, that's all I had, just kind of the Filipinos. Yeah. Okay, uh, during, during the, the close session, is most of your during the close session?
Some of it's during the close session.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
How old is Peter Marshall, say hi?
Hi, hi.